Kim grow and mature. Tara, I have not only seen you graduate from Dollar Bay, but I've seen your two sons Ashton and Jayden graduate. Dallas, I've seen Tiffany, Chelsea, Dallas, and Ciara graduate and leave our halls. Jeff, I watched Kim, Ake, Katie, and Michael graduate, and Kim return to begin her teaching career at the school as well. Dave, unfortunately, I've not seen Tara or Kendall graduate, but I've watched them grow and blossom into two very fine young ladies. One of them carried a crown for me during one of our homecoming ceremonies when she was in kindergarten. It's hard for me to imagine how many students I've seen come and go. I've been so privileged and blessed to have been a very small part of their lives. How many parents have I had the privilege of honoring at parent's night? How many homecoming king and queens I've watched encrown? The Dollar Bay Tamark City students will always be my kids. Yes, my official job title was administrative assistant. But my relationship with many of the kids helped them cope with difficult situations. I've had parents and peers, some of the kids tell me if I hadn't been there for them, they may not have made it through. I know my presence has had a major impact throughout the years, and although everyone is replaceable, the proof of that is how many graduates return year after year to visit, and how many keep in touch with me, and how many send me their love. When I was hand-delivered letter informing me of being laid off, my heart began to break. And then, to be informed of the board's decision of offering me an incentive to retire, my heart hurt even worse. Although it may be hard for you to understand, when I have put my heart and soul into my job, into these kids, into the school system, this was a huge blow to my heart. I can honestly say that from the moment I received that letter on July 1st through today, I have felt nothing but pain, sadness, numbness, and complete shock. I have tried to understand your reasoning behind this, and I still can't make sense of it. I remember sitting in a meeting with Donna a few years back in her requesting that I give the school board and administration a year's notice when I decide to retire. I've been given 21 days. I do appreciate that no other support staff member has ever been offered an incentive for early retirement, and that some of you value the work and dedication I gave to this school for so many years. Please do not misunderstand me. I'm thankful for your financial gift, and I'm grateful. So with that being said, and with a very heavy heart, I formally accept your offer. I've completed my application to retire through the ORS system just prior to meeting tonight. My last official day will be Friday, August 1st. My biggest thanks goes to Judy Rake and Harvey Filplin, and the school board from 1988 for giving me a dance and hiring me. This place truly has been my life, and I will miss the kids the most. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Is there any more public comment?
Good evening again. I wanted to thank Steve Leclaire and Dave Mackey for reaching out to me and regards to the email I wrote to you all last month. Out of the seven members I sent it to, they were the only two board members who replied to me. That was really disappointing, and I'm not going to lie. It's kind of insulting. It shouldn't be like that. That is your job to answer the questions of people who are questioning you. I hope, I would hope all of the administration and the board members would be encouraged to have the parents participate in the inner workings of school. And that's, it doesn't seem to be the case. There seems like there is a lot of background meetings and plans going out, private groups, it's very secretive. And it's, it may not be intended that way, but that is how it's perceived. And I know I'm not the only parent who feels like that. There are many parents who feel that there is so much done on the backside, and we're kind of left in the dark, and we're expected to be okay with it. And it's not okay. Looking at the agendas, I'm concerned by the many ambiguous requests that are on the agenda. There's open-ended requests to approve issues relating to staffing wages and other staffing issues. I understand that the district lawyers have determined that the comment session be placed at the beginning of the meeting. But it makes commenting on the agenda really hard, and it doesn't match with the idea of an open meeting act when you're only allowing members to comment at the very beginning, and that's before you guys discuss what you're discussing. And I appreciate this really you saying that you're willing to respond to questions after the meeting, but that doesn't bring up the issue before the members of the board are expected to vote on it. So I would really encourage that the board looks at, you know, possibly adding a second comment session where if there's other items being discussed after the public comment session. And I understand you're not going to do it because you've already said that you won't do it, and you've already went through with your lawyers that the school board said that, you know, or your lawyers have decided that it's not good. I'm more interested in what the board thinks, not... There should be some type of response by the board. It shouldn't be just quiet. The agendas are really hard to follow. The board meetings are extremely vague. They don't comment on everything. It doesn't tell you who's at the meetings other than our, you know, comments that are made at the meetings, which should be listed there. And proposed meeting agendas are only available for a very short time online before your meetings begin. So even if I wanted to make a comment, I would have to process everything like this instead of looking at the concerns and being able to fully digest them and look at them. So I would suggest maybe also putting your agenda meetings minutes up before, well before the meetings. I really hope the board chooses not to approve the return to school plan tonight. I think that, yes, it's due Friday, but that's, that's not on you. There's so many unanswered questions that need to be addressed. I just, I hope that you guys take the time and really look at things before you make your decision. I do hope that I do hear from the remaining five board members who refused or did not acknowledge my letter. It's really concerning that you all felt that it wasn't necessary to respond. I appreciate your time, and thank you for helping our kids.
Thank you, Holly. This is Donna, and I'd like to tell you I did respond to you shortly after receiving an email, and I still have it in my sandbox, so I will re-spend that to you.
Thank you very much.
Shortly after. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so any more public comment?
There were some comments in the chat portion.
Anybody see those, or?
Do you need me to read them?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I think it's, is it possible for the person making the comment to read, or are people unable to do that?
They're unable to do that because there's so many people on here.
All right. We have some questions during the, during the presentation of the plan, which were not on the plan. And some comments also about the closed campus, not, not being for the closed campus. And questions about Karen resigning, which people are welcome to ask us, but it's not a time for answering questions at this point, but for making comment. Okay, so...
Is there a reason, and I, I understand when we spoke that, you know, your lawyers have suggested that you do not respond during this time, but when is good time, and when will you respond to these questions that are being asked by other parents?
When people contact me, I respond. It's not always the same day, but I do respond when people communicate with me.
So are we finished with public comment now? And we'll move on to consent agenda. Do we have a recommendation to approve the following? The board meeting minutes of the previous month, financial statements to the previous month, and checks written in the previous month. Do we have a motion? I can make a motion for that. Do I have support?
I'll support.
Do we have any discussion on this? All in favor? Aye?
Yes, I'd like to discuss the minutes.
Okay.
In the minutes, it says that we've approved the hire of Barb Benson for the food prep assistant position. And I would just like clarification, has Barb actually been hired? Because I had heard otherwise.
I talked with Barbara, who intended to work with the school again before the board approved that, and then the board approved it, and I haven't talked with her since. We just left it at sometime in mid-August, we would all meet together.
Okay, so... I guess... I guess, should we put something on the minutes to say that it still is open, or what? What exactly are we doing in that case?
I guess I'm, I may not fully understanding, because when I talked with Barb prior, I mean, that's how we always do it, is I talk with the candidate. It says they would like to be hired, then the board either hires them or doesn't, and then we move forward past that point. So if, if we're at a point where she doesn't want to do it anymore, then I guess we'll just deal with it at that point. I hadn't heard that.
Well, I guess one of the things that Barb had wanted to see before, you know, making that decision was a job description. Is there a job description put together for that yet?
That's what she and Judy and I were going to meet about, so we could make sure that we come up with something, and we're all on the same page about that. So Judy and I started talking about it. We pulled into the name of the position. It's no longer delivery, food delivery person or something, but it's assistant cook at this point. But our plan was to meet together and come up with that reflected the new position. Which is a little bit hard, because we haven't had that position before, but that was what we had left it as.
Okay. Well, I guess, I would hope that it can be clarified or solidified there as far as the offer and the acceptance.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any discussion?
Donna, just really quickly, isn't it protocol on a non-in-person meeting that we make every vote by roll call?
Okay, we can do that. So do we have, well, we had our discussion, so all in favor? Donna, yes? Steve Leclaire?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens?
Yes.
Tara Jenkey?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes.
Jennifer Stout?
Yes.
All in favor? None opposed, none abstained, motion carries. Okay. So we're going to move on to superintendent principal report.
So we start school on September 8th, and as of now, we plan to start for some mode of in-person instruction and hope that will continue. There, there certainly is discussion across the state on whether the governor will decide that all these trips have to go with remote learning, but we have not heard that yet, so we're planning to operate as if we are going to be in person. We have in-service days scheduled two weeks before the start of school this year. We have two days of capturing kids' heart training, which gives staff and teachers really good tools working with kids who have dealt with trauma or other difficult situations in their lives. And then we have one day of in-house training. Thursday, September 3rd, a week before, or a few days before the first day of school, we will have what is normally a kindergarten social, but this year is going to be basically kindergarten opportunity with their parents to meet the teacher and see the classroom before school starts. On 6th and 7th grade, orientation will take place that night, and that's not yet planned. Just the date is set. For athletics, we have cross-country girls volleyball and football, all starting this week. And as mentioned before, athletics programs are following MHSAA guidelines. We negotiated the contract with the teachers a few weeks back in July and tentatively agreed on several proposals. And I'm pleased that negotiations were able to be done in July this year. And due to the financial uncertainty due to COVID, there is no percent raise for teachers this year. However, steps and lanes were granted, and there will be a scheduled payment to those teachers who are not on the step schedule related to state funding later this year. The Jubile House on Helmand will soon be on the market for the board's approval. And aside from just noting that the construction work has been very exciting, I think that's just about it. It is crunch time with construction, and so there are a lot of things that need to happen here in the next few weeks, but we are assured that they're going to get done. Moyles workers have been really, really putting it out there, and even working on some Saturdays. And the subcontractors working with them have been excellent as well. We do anticipate that everything that's supposed to be ready for the first day of school will be, as Tim mentioned, and we, I will reiterate, are asking for people to be patient, and particularly teachers and staff, because it's going to be a very quick turnaround in those last few days before we are able to get into the classrooms and get things ready like we normally would. But that is the nature of the beast, and that's dealing with construction, and we are all going to do our best to be flexible. So that is about it for my report, and I'm not sure if Tyler is on right now. Tyler, you there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Oh, hi Tyler. Do you have reports?
Hello.
Hi.
Christina, are you able to share your screen with that information, financials? Is that possible?
Why, don't, oh, I'll cry. Why don't you go ahead and start talking as I try to find that?
Okay, so really brief. I just wanted to update the school board. We are preparing, preparing for the audit. We hope to have that scheduled with Rukelas either by the end of this month or early in September. I've updated our June financial statement, our statement of position to reflect the July state aid, and then I'll also give another update in August once we receive the final 1920 payment. There hasn't, but we haven't had a whole lot of expenditures in the month of July. You'll see the, you should see the checklist thing. I believe there's $71,000 from the general fund, and then a significant sum from capital projects. A big portion of that was for the bond. Any questions on any of that?
I don't have any. Okay, so then I guess we'll move on. Thank you, Tyler.
Okay, thanks, Donna. Take care.
You too. I was struggling to find the financials piece. Is, is, does anybody want me to grab that? I can see it, it's just my computer's not cooperating and letting me load it at this moment. Do you want to wait another minute, or are we good to move on?
I'm okay to move on if everybody else is...
Could I bring up something? This is Steve here.
Yes.
There's several people that have comments that were trying to be heard during the public comment portion, and they appear not to have been answered or given their time to speak their, or give their statement. So is there any way we can revisit that or reopen the public comment portion at this time?
Is that something that we can do, Christina, or?
Yeah, I believe you can just make a motion to reopen, and people can second, then you can reopen that, and then return to it.
Okay, do we want to make a motion now to reopen to public comment? Do we have a motion? Or is that what you mean, Steve?
That, that would be something that I'd like to see happen. Unfortunately, I don't know if the technology is working so that the people can actually be heard. Shall I call in, or what would work so that they can have their voice heard?
They can call in. There's a phone number on the posting for this meeting that they can call, and then enter the code.
Would make, giving them a few minutes to be able to call in and then reopen that? I, I mean, I would make a motion to do that if we'd like to go ahead and give that opportunity.
Do you want us to go, shall we go on with the meeting more to give them a time to do that? And then we'll make them all...
My, sorry. My question, were people trying to make comment during the public comment section, and that wasn't working at that point because they're mute or something? Is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what I'm saying. Because several people are saying that they can't unmute themselves because there's so many people in the meeting.
Well, you could schedule the comment for a further part of the meeting when people are able to get there. That might work.
Can just a board member go through and actually read the comments and read who wrote them? They were all put in during the public comment time.
Oh, I thought Steve was saying that there were people who were messaging you, Steve, that they couldn't get in.
It's in the chat section on the meeting.
Oh, it's in the chat, but they couldn't be read then. Certainly, if they're just chatted, they can be read. Yeah. But you'd have to change the course of the agenda at this point.
Okay, so a motion to open back up for the public comment?
I would make that motion if it hasn't already been made. This is Dave, for those who can't see or perhaps hear me well. I would make that motion with the caveat that all the public commenters be mindful that we can't and shouldn't discuss personnel matters in a public setting.
I second that motion. This is Dallas Bond.
Okay, and so, any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Well, I have to go to everybody. Donna, yes? Steve Leclaire?
Yes.
Jeff Stevens? Jeff? I guess I, Jeff, can you hear us? Jeff Stevens? Tara Jenkey?
Yes.
Dallas Bond?
Yes.
David Mackey?
Yes.
And Jennifer Stout?
Yes.
Okay, so all that I could get was in favor, none opposed, none abstained. Motion carries.
So it looks like there are some questions, which, again, people don't normally respond to, but can be asked. And then some people are using the chat as they, as a place to message one another. And so, of course, that's not in the category of public comment either. So would one of the board members, Dave, would you want to read the questions that are public comment type of questions or statements? Would that work for people?
I'm certainly willing to do the reading. I just want to be sure I start from the correct, from the first unanswered question. Would someone please help me to make sure I start from the, where I should begin?
You should start where Cheryl commented that the response by the superintendent didn't make any sense.
That was 6:59?
Yes, 6:59.
So right from there?
Yes.
Okay, Cheryl Leclaire had asked if the reason for the closed campus was related to liability in a general sense rather than strictly COVID policy. And there are, there's then a comment related to personnel, which I, I don't believe we should discuss personnel matters in a public forum. If I'm wrong, I'll be glad to, to read that comment. The next comment is, would taking morning temps as the student walks in be okay if parents are informed it's required, or if they sign a waiver? And then the follow-up to that is, if that was to become policy, who would conduct the temperature checks? The same commenter asked if a plexiglass stand would work. Would a plexiglass stand work in the student day behind? I think that might have been an autocorrect on that one. I'm not certain I understand that question. It says, would a plexiglass stand work in the student day behind it? But I, I have a hunch that might have been an autocorrect, because there was a different meaning perhaps.
I think she's asking for separation purposes because you can't do the six feet. Is it possible to do a piece of plexiglass between each child in addition to their mask?
Okay.
Will we get responses on these? Because this was part of the question and answer portion.
We have not discussed plexiglass things very much. That's not something that is happening in Phase 5 in, in the plan, in the return to school roadmap, that is. I don't know if that would be realistic in our context, but we can certainly look into it if parents are asking us to do that. And the, the return to school committee did discuss the open campus lunch as something that didn't seem like a good idea anymore. And I did add my comments that I have never liked it either, and that's, I mean, that's the case too. But the return to school committee and drafting the plan did discuss that.
Apparently, I just received a text that that comment was regarding during band or fitting purposes? Okay, I just...
The, the next comment was regarding a 10-minute outdoor break for high school and middle school students. Unless I misunderstood the situation, I believe that was discussed as part of the, the open discussion. And it would be a matter of the individual teachers having to determine that. There are then several personnel-related questions and comments. Another comment in support of not... Um, another comment, uh, in support of not closing campus for lunch. Uh, forgive me if I'm being too general about these, I will read them verbatim if need be. It does seem like many of these, uh, comments are related to personnel, and I understood the board to be in agreement that we shouldn't, uh, answer personnel questions at this time. Again, someone please chime in if I'm wrong. And... There is a comment about, uh, the board's, uh, having background meetings and planning sessions, uh, that we may be giving a poor impression of, of our methods. And... Then there's a, the final comment that I'm seeing, uh, is again related to, uh, okay, is plexiglass for band? And then, uh, the last question, comment, which just came in one minute ago, says, "This is jackham. We have many solutions for dividing tables, lunchroom, and classrooms alike. Many solutions for COVID." Uh, do, do you folks feel that I was thorough?